Call this meeting to order. The City Commission of Rio Grande City is Wednesday, December the 9th approximately 6:10 PM here at Commission Chamber, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83 here in Rio Grande City, Texas. At this time Commissioner Salinas will lead us in the invocation followed by Commissioner Ramírez will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please fire it. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here today. We pray for all those who are present for their families. We pray for all the hungry, the homeless, pray for all our children, pray for our troops home and abroad, for our peace officers, first responders. We pray for everybody here on this board to clear our minds and help us make the best decisions for our people. In your holy blessed name we pray.
Amen.
Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord God who presents us, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Honor the Texas flag and the Texas religion. Texas one state under God, one entity visible. Roll call in finding a forum is Guerrero.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor Villarreal.
Present.
Mayor Pocham Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Salinas.
Here.
Commissioner Ramírez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a form sir.
Next business in order is letter D, departmental reports. Ms. Reyes will you?
Mayor Commissioners, in your package you have reports on the different departments. They are also present. If you have any particular questions, there are specific items I do want to focus on some of the departments such as I do want to thank the staff that worked on the parade float. I think it stood out and was very much welcome and appreciated by Grupo Solido. And also the concert had a very good turnout, the Christmas concert in coordination with the Crime Stoppers and the, I think the chamber also participated in awarding the awards at that night. I think Lieutenant Solís here can say you know they have filled the still trailer?
Yeah, it wasn't half filled trailer. Normally by the time right before Christmas we normally fill it all.
And you'll be distributing the toys on the 20 second?
We normally tell the public because normally we'll do a convoy and we'll have Santa riding in Chaca in one of our trophies. So literally all the agents that are riding around turn on their sirens in certain neighborhoods and people start, they hear sirens that are coming up. So we park in certain streets and kids will just run up and get a ride.
It was a great effort by many departments and organizations and obviously the result was getting a lot of much needed toys that would be presented to, to boys and girls in the community. So kudos to all of you who participated and certainly provided your time, effort and money as well. Excellent event and yes, the float was phenomenal. The 18 wheeler with, yes by lease trucking and I'm sure it took a lot of effort to, to make that happen. And so again, kudos to everybody who was part of that. Excellent job.
The Fire Department, I know Chief Reyes is here. We have been invited to participate in the ceremony to honor one of the founding fathers with the volunteer fire department which we are now owners of the Rio Grande City Fire Department. Mr. Martín Galván Sr., Chief, you want to give us a little bit more on tomorrow's event, I think it is?
Yes, tomorrow we're gonna have a ceremony for one of our ex-volunteers for our department, Mr. Martín Galván Sr. He was in the department for 20 plus years volunteering there before it became a city. So with our staff and also mentioned Fire Department on our guard, we're gonna be coming in tomorrow at 9 o'clock and standing watch from 9 to 10 and then going to the church preceding the funeral arrangements at the cemetery. So we're gonna be there all day tomorrow. Most of our day tomorrow.
And with that same thing commending your department here, I know I've seen your department at all the events, the tree lighting, certainly the parade and chamber events. So I mean it's great when the different departments participate in the community events. So again, same thing, kudos to your department as well.
Anything else, Chief? We do have Public Works also, I know that they've been very busy in setting up all for the festivities of the holidays and also the carts that are being picked up. You also had a demonstration on some patchwork from a company yesterday that looks very promising to help you address some of the needs of the city.
Well, thank God the most of our events are gone so we can get that normal and get work done throughout the city. So hopefully we'll still gonna continue working on some additional tree lighting for the city and some areas, projects that could get done over for, for this year. Training improvements in some streets and so far.
Can you use an update, Mr. Guerrero, on the bins, trash bins that you all were picking up? What's the status on that? How much longer? I know I've seen still a lot of bins out there that have not been picked up.
Yes, Mr. Ramírez, hopefully by the end of this week, all those bins are gonna be completed. Hopefully by the end of this week, sir. So we're almost done.
I think the numbers of last week were a little over 2,000. So they've done, yeah, they've been working late on Saturdays and?
There's a whole bunch of them out there.
I know Fire and Co. Enforcement, they've got their series of?
And just to say, of course, Mr. Guerrero, same thing, Kent. I know you spend a lot of time out there making sure that things are done and again with all the festivities that we've had, I know it's kind of a relief for a moment. So again, I can't say that enough for all the departments here working for a common goal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I know Planning Department, you just went through planning and zoning and you got very important ordinance basically being recommended to them that will come to the city council in January. Give us a little bit of information.
Just like Mayor Commissioners, the two ordinance, the table, both of them, the Texas Foot Establishment and the noise ordinance, they wanna require some further research and actual testing on the noise and, but they're willing to carry on the next minute. The, most of the subventions that were approved.
Do you have a number of how many in the animal control division of your department have been adopted?
Well, let's put it this way, we haven't used any fatal plus in the last two months. So basically all the dogs that have been picked up have been adopted.
Adopted.
Numbers, it varies and times to pick two, three, four, five dogs in a day. Again, Medved, the company that provides the pharmaceuticals, I mean call me what's happening, that means we're not using them.
It's a good sign, sir.
Yes, it is. We're saving money and at the same time we're not putting any dogs to sleep.
They're getting a home.
And at the same time they're adopting it, they're signing waivers saying they have to take care of them, they have to vaccinate them, they sign release forms. It's not just, okay, I'll take this dog and do whatever I want with it. We keep track of them.
Going back to the noise ordinance, what's the decibel, what are we looking at as far as the decibel number for?
One of the arguments that, one of the members challenged was, well, maybe there's existing enough noise through Main Street by 18 wheelers, by traffic itself that it would not allow basically any business at all. In other words, maybe there is enough noise already to challenge this ordinance, you know, that will surpass the decibel limits. In other words, not enabling, you know, for most businesses to function properly.
Yeah. You all be discussing that, having public hearings for that?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to bring up an issue that happened with, with P&amp;Z. Apparently they were not informed of the meeting, the last meeting that they had and some people did not attend and also understand that, or I know that there's some new members to P&amp;Z.
Okay.
And apparently they're not being informed as to the current projects that are at hand.
Okay.
And I think that we need to provide some type of service that'll help them understand what P&amp;Z is all about and if we can provide some training for them, it'll be a good idea.
Absolutely, and they are informed as to sometimes the yearly trainings, some of them are in Galveston, some of them are in South Padre Island. We get the information and also the, like the agendas are distributed basically days before the, the meeting. As a matter of fact, only one of the members was absent at the meeting. It's the usual absent member.
I think you can also contract for someone to come down and train them. That way they don't have to get out of their schedule and they can have the training here.
Yes. Absolutely.
Any other questions to Mr. Minas?
Thank you, Mr. Minas.
I don't see anyone from the library, but they do have some events coming up which is tomorrow. They do have their audio visual, Star Wars party and then on the 15th they have the library picture with Santa and this, I'm not, is there anyone with the library here?
No.
Nope. So they're moving forward. Finance, I've been working with the audit, we should be getting that audit report to the council by January, sir.
Okay.
Public utility continues also. We did meet with the digital meter representative and we're looking at coming before the council next week to sign the financing agreement to move forward. It should not take more than 120 days. I know Mr. Jones was, had a conversation with the gentleman. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mr. Jones?
Oh, it's coming along fine just basically what they're working with us and trying to get the paperwork for the audit which we're gonna supplement, right? All right. So hopefully we get that process, you know, they, they're promising us that work should start, I think it's at January, February?
January would be the construction agreement and from there on they could, within 120 days, all digital meters 100% would be installed.
So, you know, they're, they're working with us.
Commercial.
That would be commercial and residential.
And residential. We also requested some what we call traveling meters for Public Works, Fire Department when they use the water. That way we can track how much water is being used that is not billed because it's through the sweeper or to fight a fire or in those cases.
I know that they, they informed us that La Casita, the New Union Water Supply is gonna be coming on board with the same meters that we're having. So it's something that's in the works, in the work and so it's something for, for the better of the city.
And Tanka already has this type of meters.
Looking forward to them, 100% residential and commercial. You see it's gonna be a great asset to our city, digital water meters.
Parks and Recreation, I know you're ending the football season, flag football and you're, I think they're gonna go play at Palmview?
Is that for a championship?
Well, once again with your guys' support, we continue to provide for our community, for our kids and, you know, it's been successful. Our youth tackle football's season coming to an end and with cooperation with Roma High School, Roma's Field, actually the next, the next two games that are, that are final we're, we're gonna be end up playing in Roma. So that'll finish up with our fourth and, our fourth grade. On fourth grade, we actually ended up finishing up with, again, once again, the Falcon from LaGuardia ended up winning again undefeated, 7-0. They did a great job and we have two teams right now that are competing for second place and hopefully that matchup will be on Monday, Monday of next week to finalize the youth tackle football. Also, we, I don't know if you, if you were informed, we participated in an international football game against Mexico. I think it was last week or two weeks ago and believe it or not, we did good. Our fourth and fifth grade team, we ended up beating Mexico 14-0 and our sixth grade, we kinda, we lost 21-14. So they, they actually played real good, you know. We're, we're showing progress. It's great to affiliate ourselves with local cities, especially international, and that's great. This coming Saturday, we're, we're actually sending our LaGuardia flag football team, we had our flag football league and again, that was also successful. We're having them, our champions compete over there in LaGuardia Stadium. They're, they're having like a, I guess a tournament, but it's actually one game for each grade level. And our flag football team's playing at 10 o'clock, our sixth grade team, I mean our sixth grade team is playing at 10, our, our flag football team's playing at 11, at 12 at Roma team and at 2 we have our fourth graders go and play. Usually we're sending our, our champions team to compete over there. So I know that, that's gonna be good and again, we're catching up and finalizing our football season. Our, on soccer, we're ending it already, we have already ended our soccer for our developmental league through the Boys and Girls Club, Boys and Girls Youth Club. We ended it up on Tuesday for our 5U and as we speak right now, our 7 and 9U are playing the last game. It's a, it's a single elimination tournament and we're done with that. So once again, that, that, that was also successful. So, you know, we're, we're out there. So everything's been real good. Everything's been real good. And, and that's, that's just basically it. I mean, we, you know, we're catching up on our seasons. Our season's gonna end and we intend to start our basketball registration by January and I think I'm gonna start implementing a kickball league for, for our girls, our local girls, especially our elementary, to have a kickball teams.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas.
Mr. Barajas, just real quick, I know I've had a short conversation with you, you know, you recommending to us that you're gonna be shutting down the baseball fields for at least a month?
Oh, yes, sir. I know that, that we do a team, a team rental form at the, at the registration form for our, our facility at Al Park. It's a, it's a three month contract that they, that they sign and it ended actually on December 8th. So we're gonna give that whole December, we're gonna close it to get it going again for them on January, for anybody that's willing, especially their traveling teams that they, they need a local place to practice. And we'll start registering again for them on January.
All right. That's what purpose of maintenance or just to give aggressive break or what's the purpose?
For maintenance, sir, yes, sir. Because we've, we've been utilizing the soccer, the soccer games during those three months and of course their practices.
You mentioned earlier about trying to implement a kickball for the young ladies at the lower level.
Yes, sir.
That's, I think that's a great idea, but I think I talked to you also about maybe looking at possibly a volleyball league, maybe possibly late, you know, school year into summer. That's something I would appreciate if you guys could help us with that and I would definitely help the middle schools and high schools. That's one of the sports I really think that we're struggling with and I think the kickball's great. I think it's something that, you know, we might look at maybe volleyball as well.
Yes, sir. I know Mr. Jones brought it up as well. I think during that time, I think that our, our best time would be around between April and May, utilize it all the way through summer. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, Sarah's here with the Heritage and Tourism, she just finished the concert, she's gonna move forward now with a mountain bike event coming up in January. This is through a valley group that has a large network and will start exposing our South Fordice Trails to make it known that, you know, it is a viable place to hold tournaments and bike events.
Yes, like Ms. Reyes mentioned, our north trails are very popular. If you pass by there on the Hospital Road, I know Mr. Jones has mentioned, we'll have a lot of traffic there. So hopefully with this event, we can showcase the south trails because they're very good biking trails. I know that this gentleman does events all over the valley. He's done in South Padre Island and Sullivan and other areas and he tried the south trails and he said that they were the best in the valley. So we're excited to bring this event. It's scheduled for January 16th and he's gonna handle the registration and we're just gonna assist the day of the event and look for a couple of sponsors. So that'll be the city's role.
What's, what's gonna be called again?
It's called the Rio Mountain Bike Challenge.
What we hope to accomplish with this is to?
Bring in tourists.
Have this, this exposure and therefore with the photos and videos, we can therefore market it to other, other cities that have similar organizations that might want to come down and take the Fordice, the Rio Grande City Fordice Challenge.
Yes.
Very good.
And then as far as the museum, we're already on the next phase where we're dividing the space with some iron work and that should be completed within the next three weeks. And then we can move forward with getting a committee going and starting to separate some items that we want to showcase. And I know we're still working on the souvenir shop as well, getting the appropriate paperwork so that we can officially open. And that is, we're have it tentatively scheduled for February.
Very good.
Any questions?
Back to Wally at this point, when's, when is the date exactly?
January 16th.
The 16th?
And we have a backup date for January 30th, just in case the weather, you know how January can be iffy.
And he's gonna take care of the registration, they go directly to him?
They do online registration. It's children and adults, the adults are $25, the kids are $10. And that comes with a t-shirt and a medal and we're gonna do some food, free food there and music. So even, it won't just be geared towards the participants, they can also bring their families to cheer them on.
And we're helping them with the advertisement?
The advertising and looking for some sponsorships for the food and, but they're handling the whole, they're gonna have people in different checkpoints offering water and things because they are, I know for the kids it's three miles and for the adults some are 10 miles, 13 miles and up to 18.
Will they have anybody, any medical?
Yes.
As well, right?
So we should be having a coordination meeting next week and once I get more details, I'll be scheduling it with the Fire Department, Planning and Public Works.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see personnel, but I know the Personnel Department is giving up for the open enrollment. It, it seems that time just moves faster. We're looking at opening enrollment being from January to February thereby giving 30 days for any type of changes before the actual effective date of March the 1st. We will be proposing to the city and on the agenda to change our dental carrier from Ameritas to TML. It is about a dollar more for the employee. This is a voluntary, it is not paid by the city. The difference is, is there is no one year waiting period. So somebody that takes on the dental coverage can start using it immediately and not wait it a whole year. Last on the City Secretary, I know that we went to this training seminar, they booked here, the new laws and how it affects the election. And Holly has attached in your package, calendar of all the election dates and believe it or not, December 21st starts like the official posting of notices and that would be the notice of like to file applications for place on the ballot, which it's a notice given 30 days. The first starting date would be January 20th. Holly, I don't know if y'all want to, you want to go down this calendar that you have in the, in your package?
Okay, the first day to file for place on the ballot would be January, January 20th, 2016, of course during regular business hours of 8 to 5. In February, we will order the election. The last day to file for a place on the ballot for the city election would be February the 19th. Then we go straight into your deadlines for registration to vote in the May 7th. Election would be April the 7th, which is always 30 days before. Early voting starts April the 25th. It ends May the 3rd and then our election will be on May 7th. That's different, normally May elections in the past have been on the second Saturday in May. The legislature has changed that now to be the first Saturday in May. That affects only the uniform election day in May. That was the only change there.
Very good.
So, you got it, Bruce? Starting on that road.
I know that the elections are planning right now to be held here at City Hall and at the meeting where you all have to select your sides, that's something you all have to take action on to post later on. And just for the record, on the last information, the employee recognition banquet is scheduled right now to the 16th. I know we were hoping to have the Friday, but we aren't able to get reasonable rates since Friday are when they have weddings and quinceañeras and Christmas and the banquets. And unless, I don't know, they said, what, do you know how much the rate would be on a Friday?
No. I don't have that. But I can picture it now, yeah.
I guess, I know that, and I know the music would not be available on Friday, the music that we're looking at. So, yeah, it would have to be a DJ. Unless y'all want us to proceed right now, those are the plans. If you authorize us to spend more money, we can go on a Friday and say possibly about...
So do you have the numbers? What are the numbers?
Well, I know right now for the Wednesday, we're looking at 4,000. That's what, that would include?
And venue, that food, we get growing wine.
Waiters, dessert.
Do we have any sponsors since we do business with a lot of people?
They're in the audience, sir.
Could be approaching some sponsors to?
Hello, Ms. Jackie also has also helped.
We will be sponsoring, so may I?
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe we might be looking at another date.
I'll be more comfortable on a Friday.
Yes, sir. I, I just, I think?
So we can enjoy happy hour.
I will have probably a very skeleton crew on Thursday.
Yeah, I think we have it on Wednesday. We're gonna need extras on Thursday.
And on the, on the 23rd, we always have a, like a Christmas mediana and you all are more than welcome to stop in the morning and, and just have whatever's available. I mean, there's so much food and we have, so. We will be requesting a half day on the 23rd. So if you are feeling generous and in the Christmas spirit, we hope you agree. Half a day.
I would, I mean, I would like for it to be on a Friday, yes, I agree. And just to see if we can proceed on finding some sponsors as well, see who's, this season of giving, see who, what agencies are willing to help out with this recognition.
That would be it for the department reports unless y'all have some questions on any of the departments or particular project, more than welcome to answer them. I know that Mr. Gus Martinez with Lineberger is down for them, the agenda and he has requested to be addressed right after this departmental report, sir.
Any other questions, departmental reports? Nope? Let's move on. This time if no one objects, I'd like to proceed to item 7A, presentation by Lineberger, Gogan, Blair and Sampson on status of delinquent tax collections. No objection? Move on, it's item 7A.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Honorable Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gus Martinez, that's correct. I'm here to give you your, your brief fiscal year report for delinquent taxes and I can give you some ideas as to how the, the municipal court fees and fines are going as well. It's a very, it's very brief, I can truly come by and give you a very detailed one, but it might get a little, little confusing, but here's, here's essentially the approach. We do, we do seven mailings a year. If we do any more than that, it seems, people seem to ignore them. We can do less, but I think seven, between seven and nine seems to be appropriate. And we cover the entire tax row which is about $900,000. After the mailings, we start making contacts, phone calls, we have a skip tracing software that we use that we locate people with their address or their driver's license or whatever we can. We do a lot of knock and talks and if that doesn't work after, after some time, then we go into litigation. And last year, we recovered over $100,000 just in litigation alone. These involve judgments, maybe tax sales, maybe post judgment payments. And right now, we have 460 accounts in litigation totaling about $400,000, which is essentially almost two thirds of your entire tax row. So you're covered in terms of, of high dollar down. We turn the page, you'll see the result of our efforts. Last year, we ended up at 183,500 and this year, we're at 239,107. So we've, we've increased a fair amount coupled with the fact that the current collections, I think we're at 88%. So that's, that's a good number for a city this size and I, I anticipate a rise in, in numbers as well next year since we just, we just closed out two very important accounts. Now, I know in speaking to Mr. Jones, that there's incentives in the city in terms of perhaps purchasing some property in a downtown area. I'm, I'm prepared to get a map and, and see what's available in terms of what's been foreclosed so the city can then maybe eminent domain it or, or buy it straight off from the entities. But if there's anything else you need, I can, I can, I can come back with, with more detail. I can tell you that from May through August, the fees and fines recovered for a municipal court were about $42,000. And from September through November, they were about $40,000. And from September through November, it, they were about forty thousand. So we're, we're ahead of last year's pace because we just, I mean, it was, it was hard to get the ball rolling, was the transfer of the software and, 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 and the modules, but, uh, uh, now, we're on good ground and we're, we're making progress on the fee and fine event.
Could you repeat the amounts?
It was, it was, it's on my phone. It was, uh, it was forty thousand, two hundred for, um, from May through August, and forty-four thousand, five hundred from October to November, from September to November of this year.
What's their total delinquent base?
The total delinquent, uh, for the year ended up being, um, one hundred and seventy-one, two hundred in base, and, uh, sixty-seven thousand in P and I for a total of almost two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
But as far as to- total delinquent, a amount that is commu- right?
The amount of money that's, that's delinquent, you've got, uh, close to a million, a lot of it is, uh, pretty uncollectible stuff, a lot of it is, uh, is undivided porciones, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of junk in there that we need to either figure out what to do with, um, some of them are, are, are past such limitations, a chunk of them have an owner listed as unknown. Uh, we met with the city manager sometime back, and we explained all this to him, but we can definitely come back and give a little update on, 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 on that end.
Mayor, we had had, uh, been having some quarterly meetings with the Appaloosa District, um, Tax Office, with School Tax Office, and also with the delinquent tax attorneys, in trying to bring down the total cumulative delinquent tax account, um, and we started with one point one, we were able to bring it down to one. You all removed a lot of personal property accounts, and that brought it down. In figuring back in the meetings, it looked about two hundred and some thousand.
Yes.
Were due to those undivided porciones. Um, when this year started, I saw it go up to one point three.
Yeah.
And that kind of again, like, struck me like, whoa, that's a lot of money for us to be out.
It is, and it's not, it's not so much money that, that, uh, your currents are fine, they're eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent, people are still paying their taxes on time, so that money is just an accumulation of, of, uh, a lot of it's personal property businesses that, that, that shut down and don't pay their inventory upon, upon shutting down, and, um, you know, there, there really is, I would say safely, your tax row is more in the eight fifty, nine hundred thousand dollar range.
Say that again, sir.
Eight, uh, the entire tax row, once you remove some of the stuff that's uncollectible, instead of one point three or one point one, I'd say it's in the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. So, out of this, we've collected, uh, uh, two forty, so, about thirty percent.
So, so what's the plan to be able to get some of that, in other words, to, is, uh, really, when you're looking at the amount, the percent collection rate is what, just looking at the entire amount?
You get, you get the tax row, and you, um, the percentage comes from the base only. So, yeah, if you, if you take out.
Look at the base, is what seventeen percent, is that, or am I reading it incorrectly?
That'd be about right, uh.
And that's where, okay, how can we increase that percentage from seventeen to say, what's a, uh, a good amount or average?
An average amount is close, close to the, well, it's, it's, uh, given that there's a lot of, a, a lot of uncollectible stuff on your row, I would say, uh, anything near, near twenty would be good. You take a city like Mission, or take like Alton, it's, they're at, uh, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, uh, but they have a lot less uncollectible on their row.
Are they doing something different than we're not?
No, no, they're not, it's just, it's just that the, the demographic is different, and, and, uh, we can certainly be more aggressive, we haven't to this point in this county ever sold, uh, any homesteads, you know, uh, that's not something that we, we, we like to do, but, uh, or, or shut down businesses. Uh, under statute, we can do a tax warrant, shut down, chill, they have the old taxes, and, uh, but we have, that's counterproductive, uh, you, you toss someone out of their home, how are they gonna pay their taxes?
Well, but what's a good amount that would be fair, for us to shoot for, I would, I mean, gold-wise, from a seventeen percent, to what percent would be feasible to have in mind for the, let's say, the next year, what?
For next year, I, I would definitely have, have, um, in mind, an increase from this.
Right.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, we can.
Twenty-five, thirty?
Well, uh, it all depends on how aggressive you want us to be, I mean, it's, it's one of, it's a balancing scale, and we can totally be aggressive and, 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 and like I said, start selling homesteads, start, you know, shutting down businesses, and, and we'll get thirty percent. But you, you have to kind of counter that with, with how, with how, um, that affects the community. Yeah, I know that, that there's some entities that don't even want us to sell, uh, homesteads at all, or, or don't even approach a business, uh, you know.
Could we be able to get a breakdown and?
Yeah, sure.
You know, to, yeah, I would like to see it.
Okay.
Who, who owes and who's on our list, and.
I can give you.
I would like to see that.
Give me about, about two, three weeks, I'll give you your entire tax row, top dollar down, real property and business, and businesses. And then we'll go like a little spreadsheet in terms of what's essentially uncollectible, uh, money that, that, that fraught, intense purposes will, will never recover. Yeah, we, we can do that, and we'll get you that map of downtown, see if there's anything, any properties that you in fact would like, uh, to obtain.
And just, uh, for the record, we're not in the business of shutting down.
No.
Businesses either, but, at the same time, how do we increase our, our collection rate? Uh, and I know it's a balancing act, so.
Yeah.
See what we can do, but certainly have a goal in mind as to what.
Yes.
We're, we're shooting for.
Yes, I, uh, I think, you know, I don't know if there's some, some type of, of notion in this town that, well, don't ever gonna shut down my business, or don't ever gonna take away my house, I mean, uh, so that's not the avenue we wanna approach, but at some point, we need to change that mentality. Okay.
Any other question?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe, excuse me.
Next, uh, business in order is, uh, yes, item, uh, two, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, however, if discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
Will we approve items A, B, and C under consent agenda?
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Items A, B, and C under consent, we have a second, any further discussion of these items? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, uh, business in order is, uh, number three, ordinances, letter A. First reading and approval of ordinance number twenty fifteen dash twelve, amending ordinance number twenty thirteen dash fifteen, fire department charges for emergency and rescue service by amending the fee schedule therein.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, sometime back, we approved an ordinance to charge for some fees, and most of them were coming for medical calls along eighty-three, and I know the fire chief has made this presentation. And that was an ordinance to impose these fees, and then when we came across the servicing contract, there were obviously some more fees that we did not take into account, and they're attached in this, um, in your packet. If you look at, uh, at, uh, at the list, you'll see that there's different levels, and there's different type of services for the different type of, uh, calls, and I know the fire chief is here. In his report, you'll see that the number of fire calls are less than the medical calls, medical calls being all these accidents on the, on the highway, so. Uh, one of the also biggest issues when we respond out of the city, and those are also calls that can be billed. Uh, Chief, can you go a little bit over the, the fees that are here?
Mayor and Commissioners, what you have, uh, in front of you is, is, uh, back in, uh, two thousand thirteen, we passed an ordinance of the charging for, uh, medical calls, vehicle accidents, and vice versa, uh, this new addition that we found is that we can charge most of, some of the calls that we go out to assist the county in our neighboring jurisdictions, and you also have some illegal fires, for example. Uh, a lot of people try to, uh, burn trash or brush and things like that, and if they don't have a permit, they obviously can get fined for that, or, or billed for that. Uh, with this new, um, amendment, the, we, hopefully we can get is, is that we're gonna have a company that's gonna be billing on a monthly basis. So, we'll get the, from the hundred percent, when it, all bill that they send out, uh, we'll collect eighty percent, they'll collect twenty. And there's illegal fires, like I said, and there's also faul- uh, false alarms. Um, and on a monthly basis, we get about fifteen, twenty false alarms from businesses especially, and some homes that, that, you know, were either nuisance for a kid, you know, put in the, the pool station, or just, you know, they were doing something that they're supposed to, or some of the businesses do not actually keep up with the maintenance on their fire alarms, so we contin- continuously start getting, uh, alarms throughout the day, and, you know, we're responding code three, so, you know, we try and amend all that stuff, so hopefully.
And if I understand correctly, when we pass this ordinance, we respond, there's a third-party administrator or insurance, whatever you wanna call it, they decide who gets what reimbursement? So now we're adding to the schedule, or raising the schedule?
No, some of the rates were not involved, if you go down the motor vehicle, I think we had maybe two or three rates, and now we're, you've got different, cause obviously each accident is, is different on the motor vehicle incidents, you might have one that's a fender bender, or you might have one that's a full-blown, you know, where it includes a fire, and so you have the levels. And this are charged to their insurance.
Right.
And, um.
But the city has no billing?
No, the, we had, we would have, uh, a contract to go into billing service. And they, from whatever they billed, not a set rate, that's the percentage that they would get paid, only what's colle- from what's collected, not.
The service already, it's already, it's a previous ordinance, right?
We've got a third-party contract, and you mentioned only twenty percent, the city gets only twenty percent, or whatever, eighty percent?
We get eighty, they get twenty, because of the billing aspect of it, so.
Yeah, and that service contract, that billing contract was never put into place because it did not match the rates that we had in our ordinance, so this will mesh them together.
You mentioned earlier about false alarms, who do you, uh, bill when it's a false alarm?
They're gonna bill the businesses, for example, um, we have certain false alarms in Ratama Manor, so they're gonna bill Ratama Manor.
Is that every single time, or is that like, maybe after a third one?
There, it's gonna be up to.
The first one is free of charge, right?
Yes, and then I think up to the third one, after the third one, they're always still billing, but we're gonna let them know, advising them, look, this is what's going on now, because there is times that we respond about six, eight times to that business in the whole day, or in about five, six hours. A lot of them, like, they have, uh, maintenance issues with the alarm, and they don't properly take care of it, so they're continuing, continuing, we'll continue, go out there and go out there, and have the same issue a lot of the time, so we try to tell them, you know, we'll try to fix it because we're attending other calls, and we have to separate the crews and things like that, or, uh, uh, ask for overtime people to come in, and stuff like that.
I would recommend that Mayor, this does go through, just, uh, maybe I can sit down and see the most common appearances and talk to people, you never know what's changing.
To make sure we notify, or any of what.
At least the most common.
And I think it is, uh, to, Mr. Santos, uh, uh, there is that discretion on that first call. To do the warning and, and to tell them, you know, this is the ordinance, and a lot of people will start looking at it, oh, well, I better do something about it. Uh, we do have a very limited, um, crew, and it's a large area that they serve, and you know how it takes from one end of the city to the other. And while they're attending to a false alarm, you know, somebody's life could be in jeopardy, so, it, it's more to make them accountable, to make them responsible. And we're not trying to go on the first call and.
Right.
Hit everyone with a fee, just make them aware, this is coming up, you know, you keep on, how many calls can we call without actually charging a fee? But we will do every outreach possible on this, sir.
And we're looking at commercial or residential as well?
Commercial, ma'am.
Commercial?
Commercial, uh, we're looking like, uh, the hospital, Ratama, City don't bail, Walmart, a lot of the times, like Walmart or H E B, they have a sprinkler system, so they don't take care of the, of the sprinkler system, so the alarm starts going off throughout the day. So we're getting called four, five, six, eight times throughout one day, and we have to go out there, and we make them realize, you know what, we're in another call, medical call, or vehicle accident, so we have to dispatch another truck out there, because we have to respond. And also, one of the main things is that, um, uh, we have a lot of vehicle accidents, medical calls, so mainly, we're gonna try to target the insurance companies, you know, to take care of that bill for that, and, and if you look, and a lot of people don't know or are aware that when you pay your insurance, you pay a portion for that, that response, that out there, a, a lot of the cities out there do this, and they get a pretty, you know, uh, response from it, and, and, you know, income from it, so. That's, that's mainly the thing, cause, uh, we're having a lot of calls, about eighty percent of our calls are vehicle accidents, medical calls, and things like that.
So we would. What's been the collection amount that we've, uh, had the last two years, and you said we started in twenty, twenty thirteen, what, uh, do you know offhand, um, most or menos, the, the amount that's been collected?
Yes, so we, like I say, uh, earlier, we were not able to implement it because the rates were not the same, so it was either changed the whole contract, but when we saw that the, they had more, um, description and more detail and difference in the, uh, the way we had adopted the previous ordinance, it was very limited. So we said, it's better to amend the contract to adopt those rates, and.
Why did, why did it take us two years to come back and amend it, I mean, we passed on twenty thirteen, and it's been two years since we've, uh, I mean, if we were not billing, so what we're doing last two years? I thought we, we didn't come back and amend it right away, and there was an issue with the, the prices or how it, you know, what, what they were billing or not allowed to bill. I mean, you're saying that we have not billed in the last two years, and we passed the ordinance two years ago.
We, we have to take the contracts and, and try to get them ready and, and sign, that way they can come in and start the, the process of the.
Contracts would be.
The software, and then the billing process and everything, and change all our, our system, what we have right now, into that new system that we're gonna be on.
Yes, that's my question, it took two years to.
The, he actually did not, yeah, the software, which was not included in the, um, in the whole package, he had to purchase it, and that, he barely purchased it in this budget. I know that also Jackie was reviewing the contracts, and they kept changing because of the, the rates. So we're now ready, sir, but it did take us some time, in all the ups and downs that the city has experienced in the past two years.
Cause the software's, it's, it's kind of expensive, it's all, about five grand per year, so, you know, we're trying to work that out. And also, uh, like, the fire that we have with the cartonada, that would be one of the things that we could actually re- get reimbursed.
To move on it, and then just start the process, and that way we're not in the same predicament a few months from now, or a year from now, so. Anything is to follow up.
When would this take effect?
Well.
When would it be?
To make sure we're letting people know, eh, these, especially with a false alarm.
This is the first reading, so you need a second reading, so you're looking at.
You'll see the contracts in January on your agenda.
Okay. I saw when we were preparing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, I mean, Chief Ray.
I still have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second, any further discussion on this item? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, business in order is number four, resolutions, letter A. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirty-seven, authorizing staff to open a bank account for solid waste funds, and designating signatories for sane.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, this account will house, or will have the monies that are being collected for brush and sanitation services. Um, right now, they are in the public utility fund, and we would be removing them from there into this special account, and thereby accounting, you know, the costs associated, uh, with our new contract and our new services.
Okay.
I mean, this fund would be in the utility, yes?
No, this is a separate enterprise fund, and this fund would track the expenses and costs where this service would be a self-sustaining service.
So we got the opinion from the out-of-year, will you take the funds?
On this particular fund, we did talk to our current CPA that we have, Ms. Diana Robles, and, uh, she mentioned that this would be the best, uh, idea to, if we're trying to sustain, uh, a service where the funds that are being, uh, collected, will pay for all the expenses, and also be able to finance some of the trucks that we're going to need for the brush collection.
I saw one here.
Ted? I have a motion to approve. Have a second?
I also have a motion.
We have a second, any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries, next, uh, business in order is letter B, discussion and possible action to approve.
Okay.
Resolution number, did I skip something? Kind of like last time, number twenty fifteen dash thirty-eight.
Actually on the side of the council.
All right. Authorizing staff to open a bank account for park fees and designating signatories for sane, letter B.
Mayor, it, this, we've had, the city's had an ordinance where it collects park fees, and I don't know if Gilbert's still here, but it's about three hundred and sixty dollars per, uh, new home, or in a commercial, uh, permit, it would be based on the square footage. Right now, the fees are going into the general fund, and the ordinance does call for a separate bank account in order to, to track this fees. This fees could be used to, to, uh, match grants or to leverage funds from other sources. Uh, but at this time, uh, the general fund is a large fund, and all funds in there, uh, you know, once they're, they get mingled in there, um, then it takes a lot of, some depth, separate accounting to keep track of those, uh, park fees that are being collected.
Going back to ordinance twenty, dash five.
Yeah, that's.
And then after, right, okay.
I'm sorry, sir.
I have a motion, so go there.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
I'm looking to this side.
There a second? All right. We have a motion to approve, we have a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is number five, contracts and agreements. Letter A, consider authorization to execute a bank depository agreement with Lone Star National Bank for the period of December first, twenty fifteen to November thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Mayor Commissioners, we did go out for our, every two years for our depository contract. I know Mr. Ruben Chapa with Lone Star National Bank is here. I did meet with him and we went over some of the fees and how there would be some way of managing or maybe even reducing some of the fees. Of course, he said no, but no, but he did provide some options to consolidate some reporting thereby reducing some of the fees. There is a lot of requirements imposed on banks by the federal government. We have had a very good relationship with Lone Star National Bank. All the fees remain the same. And we'd really like to continue this relationship. I know Mr. Chapa is here present.
Mr. Chapa, would you like to say any, would you like to?
Sure. Yeah, the depository bid that we submitted basically is similar to what we submitted two years ago. It is on a full cost basis. Unfortunately, years ago, well, years ago, most public funds were basically free. But because of changes in federal regulation that have been imposed on banks by the government that has substantially increased our costs in implementing compliance programs. Just to give you an example, over the past couple of years in one particular department, we've had to add about fifty people to staff. And this is across the banking industry. So things that we were allowed to do before, we can't do anymore. So now you're seeing basically full costs on all depositories across the board. And I told Elisa, right now, the way the costs are structured, it's on an individual account basis. And if, because that's the way it was desired by the previous finance director. If you consolidate into one account analysis, you can save some money. Not a lot, but you can save. And we're trying, in the bids that we do, we're trying to minimize the cost to the city. Obviously, it's a public entity and we try to help where we can. But that would be one small way to do that. And I also encouraged her to let us know whenever you all have activities and needs of participation monetarily. Please let us know, we're willing and able to do that for you.
So you said consolidation would save?
A small amount of money. On an average basis right now, I think the city is paying about, maybe about six hundred dollars a month, give or take. It may reduce it by maybe fifty, a hundred dollars, something like that.
In your package, there is an estimate of the fees. Like Mr. Chapa said, it's, it can go out, it's based on transactions. So it can go up sometimes up to seven hundred, a little over seven hundred dollars. And this is per month. As soon as we get our audit, there's going to be another part that we're going to benefit. Some of the bank accounts we cannot close because they're still under the auditing process. Once that audit is done, accepted, then we can move forward and close some accounts and that's going to help on some of the fees also.
The other alternative, and we spoke about it, I think there's some funds in Tech School or.
Yes. Logic at Tech School are.
And I don't know what they're paying you versus what we're paying or whatever. If it's something similar, again, the more funds that you have in your DDA accounts, we give you an earnings credit of ten basis points, which is four. Again, if that money is there, that would go towards, you know, offsetting some of the expense on a monthly basis.
And that's what we're going to be continuing to meet in the next coming month.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does there is another question?
Yes, sir.
I know a couple items ago, we created that enterprise fund. Do you guys stay within or, because on page thirteen, you look at the list of funds, bank accounts? Should we put that in the minutes that we included that or does that happen?
The enterprise fund is the one that, that just got opened, the motion? The bank account? That's the bank account that we just opened.
But does that have to be listed on page thirteen?
Not right now because we haven't opened, we haven't opened it. So once we open the account, then it'll go on this list. Yes, the two accounts that you just took action on would be included here.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is letter B, consider approval of dental option and employee benefits pool. Rerate notice and benefit verification form as proposed by Texas Municipal League intergovernmental employee benefits pool for period beginning March first, twenty sixteen.
Mayor Commissioners, we're gearing up for our open enrollment and our renewal. You have there the rates in Ms. Garcia's memo. The employee rate, which the city pays for a hundred percent, did go up from two hundred ninety-six dollars forty cents to three hundred and five dollars and thirty cents. And so that's, that gives you the benefits that you have on the next following page. Right now, we have the eighty fifty with a thousand dollar deductible. There is an option if an employee wants to upgrade the plan, they would pay the difference in the premium rate. We are asking that you consider that we have our dental coverage now with TMLIB. And that is the employee cost, and like I said, this is a voluntary. I think we have about twenty employees that participate with our dental. The city does not participate with any of the premium costs with their tune. And like I say, the benefits are the same, the only is that the waiting period is waived, there is no one year, yes.
So they don't have to wait a year to start?
Correct, sir.
On the health insurance, just to clarify, you said that the city pays a hundred percent of the premium? Not for the employee only or is that also?
Just, just for the employee, Mr. Ramirez. I know that anyone having dependent costs, of course, bills are deducted on a biweekly basis. It has become an issue with the requirements on the Affordable Care Act where we're now having to issue statements and notices to employees that we do offer benefit coverage. It is a form that they will then submit when they do their income tax report showing that they were offered. And thereby, the city is not penalized as an employer. Whether they get the insurance with the city for their dependents or they go out to the exchange or to a private insurance company, that is something that they will get a form when they submit their income tax, so they won't be charged the penalty.
Any other questions?
I'll ask. Mr. Mayor, we don't need to go through the open room in the middle of fiscal year?
We've always had the March first renewal since I've been working with the city. In the past, we would have, it would be like thirty days right before. But because now they, we are being asked to have all our paperwork ready. So we're doing from January fifteenth to February fifteenth, thereby giving those two weeks for any changes. And then for the payroll and for the March first.
Just getting the sure, I may ask a big question, a hundred percent, but let's say when I'm born, it didn't go up too much, but then we have what, two hundred and twenty?
Yeah, it does affect our budget for the remaining from March to September. That is something that we will work with the departments and figure out in their budget.
I would come out of their budget.
Each department is funded for their employees an amount for the insurance.
Is there any way we can, I mean, just a recommendation that we could contact TML or give a little time during fiscal year planning, do a little budget planning? Instead of in the middle of fiscal year, I'm not saying.
We can change the renewal for, for next year.
It's just how it adopted when the city incorporated. We didn't have insurance until we negotiated one of the proposals and it just ended up being March first, the contract.
Yeah, the mayor commissioner makes sense to have that through those rates before.
For the October one. We can certainly look for them to, for the coming year to move it.
I mean, we want to help them, that's great.
It does affect the budget. Yes.
It's something we planned.
Right.
Can you work on that, Mr. Mayor?
I'll ask Mr. Victor Diaz.
Okay.
But it'll still be covered a hundred percent.
Oh, yes. We've, we've always done our budget conservative and we've always allocated into the budget, insurance budget to foresee some of these changes. So when we, when we went on the budget, we went more than two ninety-six, we went three hundred dollars across.
Very good. I saw one there.
Have a motion to approve, we have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is letter C, discussion and possible action to approve a lease agreement with Gerald Salinas, DBA Salinas Fitness. For premises at four oh five East Mirasoles Street, Suite D.
Mayor Commissioners, you do have the summary sheet on your packet. But Mr. Sanz is proposing to leave the space where the EDC used to meet in La Dejina, where the RGC equipment is. His business is having to do with fitness?
That fits our ring, right?
Yeah, that's the set rate.
That's the set rate.
Any questions?
Any questions? Any? Nope. All right, we have a motion.
I saw one.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second, any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is letter D, discussion and possible action to approve an agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety for the use of facilities at the Rio Grande City Municipal Airport.
Mayor Commissioners, the DPS has been using the Stark County Airport facilities, the Stark County, the Rio Grande City Airport facilities. This year, we told them, you know, fine, but we need for you to assist us with the trash collection, which was some, a big issue in the past two years. I know Chief can tell you how many times the trash pickup had to be at the airport. They have agreed to pay for their services and we've been able to get an agreement from them.
Yeah, since DPS deployed back in about a year and a half ago and they started, you were looking about fifty to a hundred troopers per day being located at the airport. And then we started taking care of the services at that point. Then National Guard came in, so there, you were looking at two hundred and fifty, four hundred troops. So the trash pickup was probably every day, you know, about a night yard container. So it was becoming very expensive. National Guard went back and DPS is back over there. So we decided to have an agreement or contract with them so they could take care of the utilities. Because it does come pretty expensive after a while, besides not only the trash, but electricity, water and also the.
Also the cleaning of the facility as well?
Yeah, the janitorial stuff that.
So they'll be taking care of all that?
Yes, we're taking care of all that. Today, we're out there almost all day, you know, taking care of the trimming the yard and everything. And the security out there is pretty good, so they have twenty-four hour surveillance. They have their communication groups out there also, so you know, it's pretty good out there, you know, it's pretty secure.
Okay. Do they manage all the time?
Yes, they have a, they have a trooper there, they work four hour shift. So they deploy every, from six to six in the afternoon, they have a hundred troopers around. So you're looking at about ten, fifteen troopers that go into the airport throughout the day in the morning and then at night also. And then they have their communication trailer there, twenty-four seven because of the helicopters. They have Omaha one and two, they're actually doing security. Like last night, there were pretty tight security, you know, throughout the river, throughout the night. So you know, they're twenty-four seven on the clock, their communication group and also the troopers out there.
At this point, it's paying for electricity, the util, I mean, all utilities, trash, as well as cleaning the facility and.
At this point, it would be the.
The additional trailer that they're going to set up there?
Electricity and trash.
The city is paying for the services of water and electrical, you're talking about the extra trailer that's out there.
They're going to be paying for everything. The communication trailer that they're hooked, that took up to the airport lounge or pilot's lounge. So all the electricity that's been used out of that, they're going to be taking care of that also, the trash, janitorial supplies, water, anything else that they're going to be taking care of for the, I believe they have a contract out there for about the next two years.
Only the water will not get, they won't be paying the water, only the electrical, the trash and of course the janitorials, the glass, can I see?
Everything else. Well, they do have the money, right?
They sure do.
All right.
No, we don't have a motion.
Not yet.
I saw one there.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is number six, planning. Letter A, discussion and possible action to grant preliminary and final approval to the plat of the PH subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a one-track, two-acre track, a residential single family. It is in the area of the ten fifty-five fifty estate. Mr. Milan, do you want to share additional information on this?
Mayor Commissioners, this is a one lot for residential purposes. It's similar to a previous subdivision we had MGK, KGK, I'm sorry. It's a one lot, the services are there, it's going to be serviced by Septic Tank. It's water, it's got water, there's a street turtle drive by the lot. So it's basically, the whole purpose of this subdivision is to turn into a regular lot.
This was approved on December first.
It was approved by planning and zoning already?
Correct.
Mr. Gilbert, just a question, and I don't know if, you know, just out of curiosity, why would somebody want to go through the process of dividing or to change into a one lot, a lot when it's, I mean, if you own it, if you got two lots next to each other, why not just build it on and just leave it alone? Why would you want to change it to a single lot?
Commissioner, would he bother with duty contract drawdown? So it would be legal lot and residential, all the amount of subdivision costs that have to be settled about it?
Okay.
To go through subdivision process, all, you know, utilities are there in front of everything, but you still have to go through subdivision process in order to.
Especially if it's residential.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second, any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is letter B, discussion and possible action to grant preliminary and final approval to the plat of the Lial commercial subdivision.
This, this is right here next door to us on Santa Rosa. It is a corner lot, it is a commercial lot. Also, it is an area that has never been subdivided. The water is through Union, they do have sewer service also through Union Water Supply. Range will be provided at the time of the site improvements.
And it's a tract of land that developer was, business owner was ready to start building. Obviously, it was an irregular lot, we now ask for expense turned to a regular lot. Provide basic lot layout currently included also. It's that corner of Santa Rosa Road and Highway eighty-three. Similar to El Mesquital subdivision.
And this also received approval at the December first PNC.
It was also approved by planning and zoning. Further, okay, we have a motion to approve.
I'll put a motion.
We have a second, any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next is letter C, discussion and possible action to grant final approval to the plat of the Meadows subdivision, phase three.
And this is a residential subdivision in our ETJ, one mile ETJ. Twenty-two lots, they're being serviced by Rio Water Supply. And it was also proved at the December first, two thousand fifteen PNC meeting.
Further discussion on this item?
Where, where is this one located?
I think this is the second part of a phase.
This is the third and last phase.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. I hear a second. We have a second, any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order is letter D, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for the off-street parking variance for El Mesquital subdivision.
Now, the PNC took action on this variance for, on our. Now, the PNC, uh, took action on this variance for, on our parking ordinance. Um, they are requiring, it, the requirement is a minimum of seven parking spaces, but only five can be accommodated. They were approved by planning and zoning. I know that the, uh, the exist, the parking that is going to be planned does include, or will allow for handicap parking. So they will be in compliance on that part.
And specifically for accommodating the handicap parking space or using space, though, um, that's what we're asking the city to say.
I saw movement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next, uh, business in order is, uh, number seven. City manager's report. And, uh, going on to letter B. Presentation by Rio Delta Engineering on status of projects.
Mayor Commissioners, I think before you, a, if you understand, I made it out on a, in session, in the session of the EDC board, if you don't have that, you know. It's a, a brief summary of the four projects that we have, uh, ongoing or charging, uh, with the city. If you like, I can go through them one by one, or you'd like to look through the list yourself and, and if you have any particular questions.
Go ahead and go through them one by one, sir, just briefly, if you don't...
Okay.
What are the highlights, in other words?
Project number one is the VFW ten inch anti-ashore force main. Uh, that project consists of, uh, upgrading an existing six-inch force main that runs from the VFW lift station west along eighty-three to Point Cast Redwood. Uh, with this project, it consists of the upgraded to ten inch in anticipation of upgrading the lift station.
Regulating that lift station there.
And we're also rerouting it down to tie in an existing twelve-inch line that went to Redwood's plant. That, that tiny location about three hundred feet south of, uh, of eighty-three along Redwood, about where the intersection of Mesquite Avenue is. Phase one consisted of running the line from Chili's to that point. We've got everything running all the way through and across eighty-three, but at that point now, we're on go.
All the way to pay this, right?
Yes, sir.
Right now?
And we're waiting for Tech Dot to finalize the acquisition of that right-of-way for the seventy-five bypass improvement so we can run our line down to that pan home. Phase two, we've got the property done and we've got the design about seventy-five percent worked out. We're working out the, the crossing at the creek. And we anticipate having it ready to go. So as soon as we finish with phase one, we can put that one up to biz and hopefully coincide with the improvements to the lift station. Okay, any questions on that one?
No, none on phase one.
Uh, number two is the West eighty-three Santa issue improvements, and, and this is a project that we're working on. Uh, there's an application into the USBA for funding. What we'll be doing is running a twelve-inch gravity line from Evananda's Road west to Alder's Road. We're going after the Polonia's, uh, uh, project funding, so we're tying in six Polonia's all the way, well, five all the way to one, that is, uh, Porranchipus. It's actually gonna be a phase two of a project that the county did when they cleared that lift station on Evananda's and they tied that in. Uh, we've got the preliminary report and the environmental report have been turned in to, to USBA. We've received comments back. Uh, we've returned and addressed a comment for the preliminary engineering report. In fact, this happened, well, this point in eleven, a visit of Gasa emailed us and said that they were on the verge of approving that, pending a couple of little questions they had still. And there, we should be getting the environmental report comments addressed and back to them here this week. At, at that point, it was in USBA's hands. They're actually putting the application together now rather than, and, and moving it forward.
Okay.
Do we have any questions on that project?
Yep.
Number three is the, the Fugio drain, uh, with this consists of, Tech Dot improved, uh, the crossings of eighty-three, uh, at, at, at the Fugio. That, that natural creek there.
Concrete, their natural creek, right, you have to drain it out.
It's been blocked because, uh, it must have been a property, uh, it's been blocked between the road and about, and with the, the old, uh, four-inch near ditch, county ditch begins about three hundred feet to the south. Uh, as a result, uh, when, when water flows through there, it gets across the Fugio with it and it stays there.
Stayed there.
When it jumps over the property, gets past it, there's usually two to three feet to stay there and there is other problems. So what we're doing is wanting to, to run the, if you will, a lead-off line through the ditch. Uh, the only way to accommodate the full flow, we need to dig an open ditch and require buying or condemning, uh, properties in the area. So what we settled on is that we should put a leader line in where the water does not stay there.
Okay.
Whatever the high flows go through, they'll still go through, but the low flow, whatever, stays there, won't stay there anymore and just flowing out to the ditch. Tech Dot is, is, uh, in agreement to participate and provide, uh, pipe for the project. We've got, uh, the, the project laid out and planned done except for the, the size, and I just found out this afternoon, uh, from, uh, Mr. Gracia, that, that they will be providing a forty-eight inch pipe to put in there. Uh, the material and pipe still will be determined, but, uh, we're waiting on that. We have contacted the people that are affected by, for the pipe that go through. They've agreed to grant this easement.
Is Commissioner Garcia also, Commissioner Garcia?
I, I did talk to Commissioner Garcia. We've had several conversations. Um, he agreed to, yes, County Commissioner Precedent number three. And he's agreed to take on some of the additional easement, uh, for drainage to clean out the existing drain that's there.
The, um, that ditch has been built over. Some people drifted down and built a cross it, and they're working across on the south side. So there's issues with it further down, but at least we can get the water to that point. So that, that, that project is, is ongoing. Um, we need to put together, uh, even documents and get the people signed. They would agree to do so, so they're just waiting on that. You have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, uh, project number four was the West Side Water Loop project. The city, uh, historically has, you know, when they had the old water plant where it is, they were running, they're pushing water to the west along eighty-three. And then they push water to the north and to the west, going north along Abasolo and then back on Eisenhower. But there's a gap on the west side. Then they get to the high school in STC with one line and then, and they get, uh, just south of STC with the, with the line going along eighty-three. But we were trying to, to take it something that were, in fact, a connection was left at the plant so that we could take a line from the plant north and tie it to that twelve-inch supply to high school control the loop on our system. Uh, what we're doing now, we're pumping from the new plant east this way, back up Abasolo and then back around. There's some interconnecting lines in between with, with the large carrier lines, we're long that route.
Okay.
Um, what we've worked out, we, we approached Mr. Smith, who would be through his property, and he was a bit reluctant, disummat. Uh, and since then, with the introduction of the, uh, Village Cornerstone Apartments, uh, what we saw was an opportunity to, to close the line that way. Uh, the developers have agreed to tie with him, his apartment complex back to the twelve-inch that the city owns at the northwest, northeast corner of the school district property. And then extend the line south along thirty-one, six, seven, to close the loop there.
Close the loop there.
So that, that loop would basically be funded by the developer.
Perfect.
The reason, and how we got to that point, just so y'all are clear, is previously, uh, the apartments had, had been serviced by Rio Water Supply. When I'm looking at the area, the apartments actually lie within the city CCN. Uh, there was, we're having trouble getting service from Rio Water Supply through, at the city, if they would consider it. It seems that, that that's gonna be possible and we can work with them in, in the system. So that, that's how we talked to them. We're actually, one of the major concerns is water pressure from the apartments, the size of the project to be reduced and tidying in the city system and closing the loop. So hopefully, all those areas will work with you.
Great.
Okay, uh, and we won't have to buy any right-of-way or do any of that stuff with the, with the line for the loop.
So it was a good opportunity to tap into the, the green.
Uh, any questions on that? Number five is the Alcoista Park, and then of course, that project consists of building sidewalks, a soccer field, and a bathroom building, and a bus shelter at the Alcoista Park, in the Alcoista subdivision in north of Glavomas. That project has been completed. The process has been worked through. We're in the process of closing that project. Of course, that was a project funded by the EDC. Any questions on that one?
No.
The last time I went through it, the grass was thirty-four inches high. I understand in the field, they're not jumping against it, and I don't know whether they'll, will, will get back up or not, but, uh...
Mr. Pan, it's...
So, um, anyway, that part was stated. Number six is the West eighty-three drainage, and this was to address some issues, drainage issues, uh, along eighty, business eighty-three on the south side, in that area across from the old water, it's a really, uh, running west to almost where the park is. That area initially originally had roadside ditch and had culverts at the entrances. Since any improvements have been under the area, some entrances have been restructured without culverts, which have been filled in. Uh, we, we've done topo along the area. We've had ideas on where to run the water. We can, we can figure together a cost estimate. So see where, where we can meet those costs, uh, you know, work, work with, work with the public work department and see if their budget will allow it, or plan the budget to allow it to make some improvements there.
We're, we're also partnering with Tech Dot on this for some of the material.
Any questions on that? Number seven, about City View of the Alcoista Park, Skate Park, uh, we talked on a brief thing in the EDC meeting. Uh, there was an issue about, uh, the architecture, the designers providing signed and sealed structural plans for the, for the structures that they were providing. Uh, that issue has been taken care of as of about three weeks ago, am I correct in the base? It's when they were giving the go-ahead.
I, I did talk to...
How big is it gonna be? How big is it gonna be as square feet?
I don't remember what the square foot it is, uh...
It takes up pretty much the site where, where the splash park was going to be.
I believe it's, I don't know, maybe, I mean, it's a hundred by sixty.
Yeah.
So...
It's a pretty good size.
Sixty thousand, I think.
Okay.
Do we have a starting date or anything like that? Do we have a starting date or schedule or anything like that with it?
Depending their, their design and then the approval by the funding agency.
Oh.
So we can get turned loose. Number eight is the Gata Man, Manco sidewalk repair, and that was touched on briefly. That is also EDC project. That was touched on briefly, EDC. Uh, we've already coordinated on the traffic control plan. Uh, it's just a matter of getting everybody else, you know, lined up, uh, and so we can, we're not gonna close, uh, seventy-five, we can reduce it to one lane. Uh, traffic control would begin on the south side of Main, so if we get traffic lined up through the intersection of Main, then they'll have a choke point there, uh...
Can't wait for that one to be taken care of. It's such an eyesore, and it almost seems like the building's gonna collapse into the... All right, hopefully that will not happen, sir, is that... All right, so...
I don't know, man, as long as nobody gets hurt, I'm not gonna...
All right.
No, we're working on that one. Honestly, more likely, we won't be doing any work on that until after the New Year. Traffic's already picked up and through the holidays, it's gonna get even worse. That's why I'm on that one. Number nine is the wastewater drain, uh, plant built filter press. We're working on a project with the BAC for the cap program, the media system program. This is a, a funding mechanism where they, they have five hundred, it's capped at five hundred thousand dollars, ninety percent grant. Uh, they help renew specific projects. We put in the application. Uh, the idea is to put in a filter press in wastewater drain plant to help take some of the, take the pressure off the, the drying beds during the climate weathers. But part of the project, another part is to decommission the racetracks, remove the racetracks completely and open up that area so that when we're ready for the expansion, it's there. And also do some repairs to the, to the clarifier. There's some needed repairs that need to be done. The application is in. They received it. We'll be working back on when it's gonna happen. We did a similar application, just so you know, for heating it, and it took them about three months, four months to take them back and, and get the, the money there. They haven't had much participation. And then through the venture, get money out and we're, we're, we're in line for a hundred thousand dollars. Number ten is the North Lopez Sanctuary short project, and this project is, is, uh, we're working this one up also. It just came up, uh, here before the Thanksgiving holidays. Uh, there is an area on Lopez, uh, from the road to Martin Street, where those homes do not have sanitational service. There's also an area on the road between Lopez and Washington. That block there do not have sanitational service. The residents there, they complain about, they only, some of them only have two septic systems. They're still on the old, uh, cesspool system. They haven't come up with it. And they had, had addressed it to the staff last year and were told that, that they would be targeted this, this fall year. It came up. Uh, Mr. Plan took me out there. We, we shot topo between the ends of the existing sewer systems, so we can get down the system that connects and, and get these people serviced. So we're working that one up right now. Do you have any questions on that one?
No.
Okay, uh, number eleven is the San Fifty-Five bypass water maintenance. As a result of the construction for San Fifty-Five, uh, bypass, we have two existing water lines at the intersection, one on the south side, one on the north side that need to be lowered. Uh, we, we've shot out, taken topo, we're working up the, the plants and...
By how much?
We get that done before they do the paving.
By how much do they have to be lowered?
Two feet.
Two feet?
It's not much, but at the same time, we're taking the opportunity to upgrade the crossing on the north side. By now, it's a, it's a six-inch line. We're gonna upgrade it to a ten-inch line so that if and when, we can expand our, our water system to the west, we don't have to deal with that crossing. Uh, number twelve is the Gold, because Garcia's drainage project, and this is, uh, an area that, that is on the city side, Robal, and this is, uh, Ojeda.
Maricón.
Which, as you know, there's an existing Tech Dot crossing there, and water has historically crossed through their, through their property and then crossed, uh, Old eighty-three and then out to, out to well. All that drainage has been tight on private property between Old eighty-three and business eighty-three. They built apartments and some other stuff, so blocking water there, that's one. And then two, on the south side, the owner of the property where the pipe went through, they started plugging the outfall and doing what he wants on his property. It's his property. We had no easement through there. What we're looking at is to try and explore a route that we can pipe it out and find another outfall, acquire an easement so we can maintain it and own it and, and get a positive off-line through there.
We're talking about where Ojeda is, right there, right?
Yes, sir.
Right there between the apartment.
On the east side of the church, there, there's a culvert there and they, they go through the property there immediately to the east of the church. There's actually a, a, a pipe that goes through there at the outfall side on the bank. It's already been plugged up, but, you know, so water not getting through. And the city hears about it every time we have the, the...
Yeah, we hear it from Ojeda every time, so...
We found a couple of the property owners on the other side that, that had it cleared out, out. One of them had agreed to do it. They came back and said he would advise not to, so it, it may be that we'll have to identify a site and, and either negotiate a purchase of an easement or...
She was, she would always bring to my attention that there's some sort of easement there right next to her house. I don't know, is that true or not, but...
But just the... An easement is not the problem.
There is a problem.
Is it?
The easement on the back.
On the back.
They built those little apartments there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, the city has acquired the property for the destination of this station, but we're thinking maybe we can route that way, uh, and get it around.
I, I, I think over that we need to try and expedite it because...
Monday?
I think that we need to try and expedite it.
Well, it, it may come to a point where we'll have to, the city has decided that they wanna ban, so... And maybe we'll take, we had a, a, a possible approval from a landowner and then he came back later and said he would advise not to, and so that, that went out the window.
Well, let's look at the options so we can move on it.
If we can see some options for, for the next, next meeting, regular meeting.
A, a layout and, and, and options for that.
It's, it's, it's kind of sad situations because I've been there when it gets flooded and I found...
No, she, she gets, she gets...
You know what? Yeah, and it, you know, it, it's just sad to see that, you know, in person. It's kind of sad to see it and, you know, for us to be telling her that we're gonna do something about it that we haven't done, you know, it's kind of sad, you know. We need to put some attention to it.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it for now. I don't know if you have any questions, but I don't know.
Thank you, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, business in order is, uh, letter C. Presentation by Melvin and Hunt Engineering on status of projects.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Uh, Mario Reynam, Melvin and Hunt for the record. Um, quick update on some projects that we've been working on over the past year with the city. Um, I think the first one that I'll dive right into is the lift station project. I know probably the most important one that I've got going on right now. Um, an update on that is we have completed the plan and specifications. Uh, we submitted them to the state. Uh, we received a round of comments and we have resubmitted them. And I know the next question is, well, when are you gonna bid it? Well, as part of, um, obtaining authorization to bid, we have to, uh, submit what's called a site certificate. And the city attorney provides that, and it either says that the city owns the land or we have an easement in place. And, uh, we've been able to acquire two parcels, but we are lacking one. And I know Elisa's been working diligently with staff to acquire, uh, what we call the Real Motor Lift Station parcel, and it's on Pine Street.
We were very close on this track, um, and basically on a weekend... We were very close on this track, and basically, on the weekend, overnight, there we, there's now a carport and a trailer by the property owner, obviously. And so, now we now, we have to readdress the way we approach them, because now they have some sort of improvements on their property, you know, so...
Correct.
We had to go back and redo the survey on that part. The other one is on the VFW.
But Mr. Klein says he has that one.
Yeah, we've already spoken with Mr. Marco Olivares. In lieu of them giving us an easement for the area where the new lift station is going to be, we agreed to pave the entrance and to provide some landscaping and to paint that cannon howitzer that they have, and he agreed to that.
On Monday, I contacted the Regional Director for the Water Villain Board, and I said, "Look, I have a meeting on Wednesday, I need to provide him with some options." You know, we've been, it's been going on for six, seven months now. And the first option, which I think is the best that I asked her to consider, is allow us to bid the project as is, as the plans they have in Austin. And in the bid document stipulate that if we cannot acquire this parcel within a hundred days, to delete it from scope of work. So, she's taken that to her legal department, she hasn't ruled that out yet. The second option I have is I will update the plans, revise them, to remove this and resubmit and bid this way, bid as is with everything that we do have in place. Her concern with that is she doesn't want this project to stay open for three years. She said, "Look, I really can bid this one complete project the way you submitted." She said, "But if there's no other options," she will allow it. And she's being reasonable, she's helping out a lot.
I know earlier you all had proved to go out on bids for the Solis and the one on the intersection of eighty-three and Old eighty-three. It's something that TWDB did not want to entertain, as it would create two sets of different reporting on both their sides and our side.
Yes, and they have a monthly compliance and monthly report that they have to do, so they would prefer us to bid this as one. But I think due to the circumstances, she's gonna allow us to do this if you guys direct me to revise the plans, specifications, and resubmit. And that's as of this week.
As of this week?
As of this week. We had the conversation Monday. She's running my first option through the legal channels, and we'll have an answer tomorrow from her attorney. But I prefer to do it the first way, because they have the full set of plans there.
And we'd need all the lift stations.
Yeah, I think that'd be the best. But if not, then if you guys would like, we could bid it without the Real Motors Lift Station. And I know it's critical, I know Solis is gonna have some new flow, Los Garcia's gonna have a lot of new flow, so... You know, and the documents will say that these are the first two to work on. I've talked to the supplier to kind of rush order the pumps that are needed, because they have a sixteen-week lead time, so he's gonna cut that down for us, so we're trying to get this done.
Okay. The recommendation that we did, to proceed with all five, is it five lift stations or is it four?
It's five, but we don't have control of one at the time.
Just the one on Pine, you mentioned?
The one on Pine, yes, sir. And the problem with that is existing lift stations are right away from the land, and it can't be in right of way. So, we have to move it over to the parcel that the man owns, and he did some improvements there, so he found out...
Right, that's the one you...
So, when you all approached the owner about the property, did we offer to buy it, or he's not willing to sell it? What's the issue there with him?
Uh, we did, we have to. We have to offer the fair market value, that's part of the acquisition process, and it was, there was nothing on the land. And I guess he figured that once he did some sort of improvement, we would have to increase the amount.
What about now, do we know a price?
That's not a discussion in open...
The Pine Street Lift Station, we call it, we call it Real Motors, but it's at the corner of Pine. The existing one's in right of way right now, and we are relocating it to the man's parcel, the property owner's parcel. And it's hard to relocate that one, really, because there's an alley to south, and it's the train tracks, and it's the top of the... So, it's, if we have to, we'll figure something out, but...
I know that Mr. Klein will be approaching the gentleman this coming week. And I can't discuss those negotiations in open accounts. Yeah, well, as soon as he gets a response from...
I'll have a response tomorrow. I spoke to her this afternoon, the attorney was out, but she'll give her recommendations tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Another project that I have ongoing with the city, pretty close to finishing, is the Duino Street Sewer Project. We have completed it, it's been substantially completed since September. We've been going back and forth, Rosette, myself, with the USDA.
TD.
TD. Their heartburn on this is that there was three septic tanks that we did not decommission. And the reason we didn't decommission was because of the structures on them. So, we'd have to remove the structure, decommission them. And they're gonna accept it as is, but they're not offering to pay for the three service connections. But I think we're gonna, this week, wrap it up. That's what we're trying to do this week and next week. But it has been substantially completed since September.
They do have sewer service there, it's just that the septic or the cesspool was not decommissioned. I think it was drained, but not decommissioned. Their stay on this is that they will, even though we had two separate unit prices, one for decommission and one for the connection, that they will not pay for the connection. At this point, I think it is a minimum cost to the city for the services that we're providing and the living that we'll be receiving from this sewer service. I would, at the next council meeting, will advise that we go ahead and pay the contractor for those, even though we will not get reimbursed from the state.
And then the thing to consider is that you guys were already paying, because the project was over budget, so...
Yeah.
It really doesn't hurt, it's the paperwork that we have to do, because the pay happens during the process, so that's what we're trying to figure out.
Very good.
And then I think the last thing I'm working on is the application for the water tower. That will be going through the two thousand sixteen Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, and we have it completed. We received comments, and we've addressed them.
The Garcia's?
Yes, sir.
Water Tower?
Yes, sir. Once we receive the audit, all we have to do is put the audit in, and it is completed. So, we've already had a couple rounds of discussion, and we're pretty wrapped up.
Great. Any questions?
I thought you were gonna ask us something, because you were looking at...
All right, thank you, Mr. Reyna, appreciate it. Next presentation is letter D, presentation by Eddie Garcia, he of Texas Department of Transportation. There's no objection at this time, we'll take a five-minute break. No objection, all right, five-minute break, it's seven fifty-three.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for inviting us. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. You know, no offense to the previous two speakers, but they tell me that engineers are less boring when there's pictures involved, so... But anyway, I'm gonna give a status of the projects, that Tex-Scott here in Rio Grande City and around the area. Of course, the first, before I start, I want to use some of my staff. Giselle, he's the maintenance worker for Spark County County. Pedro Ropes, he's my assistant engineer for Spark County area. So, any complaints and stuff, go to... So, with that said, you know, it's Texas, Tex-Scott's goal to be as safe as possible. We always try to start our meetings and presentations with a safety minute. Forgive the quality of the photograph, but this is not here in Rio Grande. This happened this past week in Zapata County. Usually, when we talk safety, it's after an incident occurs. And usually, it's something bad that happened. In this case, all our employees at Texas hear us talk about safety and the bad things that happen. I plan to present this at our next construction meeting, our next safety meeting. But in this case, it's somewhat bad. This gentleman here was not having a good day, obviously. But, you know, due to the work that we do as far as trying to keep the public and the trialing public safe, we do come up with innovations and tools to try to avoid the severity of incidents that happen on the road. In this case, we have some low-profile concrete barrier. This gentleman somehow missed. What I heard was that the gentleman said that there was a tractor-trailer involved, to try to avoid it. We don't know. But anyway, the apparatus here, the slope end, that is a treatment to avoid hitting this barrier head-on worked. Got high-centered on the slope end, but he was able to walk away from it. Maybe he got issued a citation by the police officer there, but he'll be able to see the next sunrise. So, you know, I guess the lesson learned here is, you know, be aware of your surroundings. Be, you know, aim high while driving, make sure, expect the unexpected, and hopefully, there was no distractions going on during the Saturday. Okay, as far as the seven fifty-five project, it is a project that was awarded to Texas Superior Asphalt Incorporated. The project was awarded for ten million, seven hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars. This road is, the project is about two and a half miles long, and includes a fifteen-hundred-foot bridge. The project extends from eighty-three at Redwood, and it goes up to two point five miles up to seven fifty-five. It's gonna be the seven fifty-five realignment project. As you can see here, we start off, and I've heard a lot of you, I talked to Elisa, I talked to her here, they said, "Man, I don't, I don't get a chance to go out there." So, basically, I bought the project to you. And normally, as always, we start with the foundation of the road, your earthwork, the contractors, the road bed, and you can see that here. This next slide shows, it shows the project from the vantage point from Los Olmos Arroyo, north towards Church Lane. Again, this is, this is the subgrade, we call it road bed, and then, of course, right here, you can barely see it, but that's the boundary where the Caliche, where some Caliche was placed. So, that's the next layer of the structure, if you will.
How many acres of the acres did you put down?
Okay, right here, you can see the same, kind of the same view, but, you know, just south of the Arroyo, looking north again. You can see the contractors working on the road bed. You can also see here that it's been primed already. That's the oil that we put on top of the, for the base, Caliche base, in order to place the asphalt on top of it. This is a contractor excavating to place some concrete blocks towards, this is north of the Church Lane area. So, you can see, this is, right now, we're having, we're still working on pouring some right-of-way fill project. We've got three parcels outstanding, one of them being south of eighty-three, that Rio Delta mentioned earlier, and two parcels up north, right up to the connection of seventy-five. So, this is the northernmost parcel that we've gotten to. We're working on acquiring the right-of-way. We should be acquiring the right-of-way sometime by the end of January. We have acquired a right-of-entry for this property here, and that'll help us in moving some structural elements for the bridge, so that we can continue working on the bridge. So, that work can continue while we're waiting to get these properties in order. These are the bridge elements, of course, that have been made. As you can see, this is looking from the north of Arroyos Olmos, south towards eighty-three. As you can see, the contractor drills some drill shafts, placed some concrete for the bridge foundation. The next element from the foundations is the columns. In this case, they're kind of shallow, they're not that tall. And of course, we got some of the steel that'll go into the caps. You'll be able to see the cap on this next slide here. These elements right here is what we call the caps. These caps support the beams on which the deck will be placed. This is, I guess, what the, you know, the bridge will be doing when it's fully constructed. You know, the water will be conveyed. This happened, this water came after the October, past October's rains, that we had it in the south region. Of course, it takes about twenty-four hours for these little...
How deep is the arroyo going to be there at the bridge?
At the arroyo, this is like the actual arroyo right here. It's about, from natural ground, about forty...
This is what I'm saying is, if the, if the arroyo goes to crest, how, how...
The freeboard on this should be approximately fifty, by add right to the arroyo. That means that from the bottom of the beams to the, to the arroyo, it'll be about twenty-three. At this, at the deepest part. Further back north, that'd be about twenty-three. But, you know, that's why the bridge is so long, to allow the water to expand and flow through the bridge. This is one of, next to last slide, this is, these are actually the beams they were placed about three weeks ago. This is what's gonna support the actual riding surface of the bridge. So, after we place all of the, all of the beams here, we'll come in with some other bridge elements, which are paddles. They'll form the deck of the bridge, and then we'll tie the steel for the deck and for the deck. Right now, we're having some haul issues. The contractor's having problems getting some truckers to bring these in, plus the holidays are already upon us. They also, they're also bringing in from San Antonio, and they don't allow any longbows during dark hours in San Antonio, downtown, so that's been an issue also, so we're trying to work through that. The beams will continue working, these are actually spanning right on top of where the arroyos, where the arroyo comes from. Will continue working south, replacing the beam south of this location, south towards eighty-three, because we got access to those locations available. By the time we finish, those locations will be able to get clear, the right-of-entry, to bring the beams from the north. These beams are a hundred foot long, it's very hard to bring them to Church Lane, because of the curves, there's vertical, and more so there's the church lanes. There's a lot of coordination that's involved, a lot of stuff that's, because of other issues, we have to work around, so...
Actually, the arroyo is gonna have thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred...
The span in the middle, what's gonna be bridge, it's gonna be fifteen hundred. That's the length of the bridge. And that's, that's pretty much it for State Group one ninety-five. Like I said, we do have, we still have some parcel needs to acquire, and we also have some environmental issues that we need to iron out. But we're looking, I mean, we can still continue working, and we'll continue working.
That is, I have a, on the north side, I told him, he briefly, he said that he'd like to come to...
Yes, there's a parcel that's not to go on, or two that are outstanding, except the one by the Vegas down south of eighty-three. We are, our battery people are making a lot of money, and we're trying to get, and they did pop us a vibration, as I said, in order to keep the plant, so we're appreciating that. All of the acquisitions, you know, so...
I think they're looking at long-term.
We're looking at people, everybody, in January. But, you know, once, we come back in January, then we'll try to get it done by then. The next projects we've got are traffic signals. These are ongoing projects right now, and now going to future projects. Signal work, you know, we, we've been studying the intersection at Eisenhower. So we had a little issue with, with some questions on right-of-way that we, we went with the city on. Those were ironed out, right now, that, that project is in the process of being redesigned to accommodate some of those issues that we discussed. So I, I don't really know when it's gonna, when it's gonna be available. I know the redesign is ongoing right now. The project is, the cost of that project is approximately fifty-two thousand dollars. So I'm hoping that by the springtime, we'll have something on board, and then we can get, we can get. Eisenhower and seventy-five.
It's a traffic light.
Yes, a traffic signal, full-blown traffic signal. And of course, we had another signal that was studied at the same time as this one, which was the one at, at Embassy, next to this new high school. That one's already been activated, it was activated back in September. The cost for this signal was approximately eighty-two thousand dollars, so.
It's working good, it's working the traffic very well.
Good, glad to hear that.
Yeah.
We just recently did some, some pavement repair right in front of the school also, so.
There's no, no, no plans on, on paving the, the downtown area?
Yeah.
Of what?
Paving the downtown area.
I'll, I'll get back, I have, I have some projects that are coming up. We don't have anything more, maybe until next year, right?
Probably next year.
Yeah. Maybe not this summer, but next summer, we'll have something on that.
Two thousand and eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I was gonna ask you, that improvement that you all did there in front of the high school?
Mm-hmm.
That resurfacing, is, is that gonna alleviate any of the standing water that accumulates there in, in the entrance?
We worked with the school district commissioner, and Rio Delta, as a matter of fact. They gave us some grades, and we got permission from the, from the school to, they have a drainage channel inside the school property.
Yes.
So they gave us some, some, they surveyed it and gave us some elevations. Jesse, with his maintenance forces, was able to go in there and cut a ditch from the low area at the driveway, through school property to that drainage channel. It's rained, we got those rains in October, we're perfect.
Is it working, does all the vehicles, does it happen? Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it's been working, I don't know if you've been there after a recent rain, but it's been pretty good.
That's a little dish you all made right from the entrance, right?
Right, we have, from the north entrance, we, we thought it would rain north, but it, it wouldn't, so. And then we've got utilities in the way, and we can't cut it very deep, stuff like that, so. The best thing to do was just cut straight up underneath the fence, the school fence. It's, it's not a deep ditch, it's a shallow ditch. So, yeah, I mean, we're working with the school, with the city, and, and Rio Delta. As far as paving projects that we have coming in this, this spring and summer. We have a US eighty-three overlay, which, this is asphalt paving, concrete asphalt paving. And the limits are from fourteen-thirty to point seven miles of twenty-three-sixty, that's towards La Victoria area on eighty-three. That cost is estimated at two-point-three million dollars. We've also got a, a overlay, another concrete asphalt overlay on FM thirty-one sixty-seven Hospital Road, from two miles north of eighty-three to US eighty-three. So we're gonna resurface Hospital Road from eighty-three north two miles. The cost, the estimated cost for that is about seven hundred thousand dollars. The routine maintenance, the routine maintenance overlay, again, it's an asphalt pavement. This is at US eighty-three from FM fourteen-thirty to the Los Olmos Bridge. So we're gonna go from fourteen-thirty back towards town to the Los Olmos Bridge, to match what was done recently here in town. Currently, like, like I mentioned, we're trying to have it scheduled to where we can do the in, in-town part. And I believe it's from, from the Y at the Shell.
From Fire Department?
From Fire Department north to all the way to the Rocky?
Rocky.
Yeah. We haven't come up with those, those limits yet, but that's, that's in the process. As far as future projects, of course, State Loop, I, I have it here, I don't know if, you wanna turn the lights on again and get everybody looking backwards, but basically, the State Loop is, of course, the loop that everybody's been anticipating. It is a priority for us. Right now, we don't have the funding for the Loop, I think I, I reported that the last time I was here. But hopefully, with some of the proposition money that was voted in, we were able to, to start up the process again. The, the environmental is still at about seventy to seventy-five percent complete. We cannot acquire properties until all the environmental is finished. The environmental includes even public meetings, which I just found out right before this meeting, through an email, that they're hoping to have one in February of twenty sixteen. We usually have those meetings at the SDC campus, unless we find another venue, but it'll be here locally. And we'll be sure to invite the city and the, and the EDC, and, and the school district, and the county, of course, to the meeting. It's a, it's gonna be public for, for the property owners and stakeholders, and whoever else is involved with the project.
What was the completion date for the realignment, seven fifty-five realignment?
Right now, I would think about another year, Mayor. That's being, that's being optimistic, I would say.
Somewhere twenty-seventeen, then?
Yeah, and, and, and it's, it's all the intangibles, like, like, you know, we still don't have some of the right-of-way, we still got some. There's been a lot of environmental issues on this project. Those haven't really held us up, but, but they are, we had, do have to coordinate to, to get those cleared, so.
So what was the story behind the cuckoo bird, is there some truth to it?
There, yeah, there was a, there was a, a nest that had a fledgling, and the, the bird is actually a cuckoo bird.
It's a cuckoo bird.
Yeah, and, and we.
In the realim, right?
Yeah, the tree was knocked down by accident, I mean, it, it was plagued and everything, but.
Unnatural.
I guess nobody told, nobody, nobody told the operator.
All right. So the, the story is true, then, all right.
The story is true.
All right.
And, and those are issues that we've had to stop and evaluate what we're doing, and, because it is important to us also. As far as State Loop, the, of course, the first phase we're trying to work on is the leg from seven fifty-five Florida Street to thirty-one sixty-seven Hospital Road, which is just north of town here. That's a priority, it's been a priority for the locals here, and state represented again. So, and, and we, we understand that that's probably where the most traffic is, so that's what we're trying to, trying to get in first. That cost, and this is like a three-year-old cost. The cost for that leg would be about forty-nine and a half million dollars, so. The second phase would be, and the second and third phases, it all depends on how fast we can acquire right-of-way. Of course, if we acquire all of the right-of-way on one of these legs first, we'll push that project forward. The second phase would be from Hospital Road thirty-one sixty-seven to FM six forty-nine, going west towards Roma. That project's approximately five miles long, and it would cost about fifty million dollars. The third leg, obviously, would be from six forty-nine west to US eighty-three north of Roma. And that's approximately eight miles long, and it's, the approximate cost of that is eighty-one million dollars.
How much?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
It's, it's roughly about ten million dollars per mile for that project. Of course, we've got a, a leg east of seven fifty-five that, that unfortunately, we, we have to delay and make it a separate part, a, a separate project from this one. And that's to try to advance the other, the three legs I just mentioned forward. Because this last leg has probable fatal flaws in it, in that there's a lot of cultural stuff, there's a lot of geographic, there's a lot of hills, there's some flood areas, there's even a Corps of Engineers pond in the area. We do have several options, one of them is to go, continue going east and going over the National Wildlife Refuge and, and tie into eighty-three. There's one that would cut directly across the Wildlife Refuge.
That wouldn't be feasible for that one, is it, to the federal government?
Well, I mean, it, it, it depends, I know there's some, some infrastructure, well, I know there's like resource exploration coming in, and they might need infrastructure. And that might be a, a time where we can sit down and, and talk to US Fish and Wildlife, and maybe make, work on a corridor where we'll provide the resource industry with the adequate roadways to go through there, and, and try to work it that way. So if, if you all find out anything that's going on at the refuge, let us know, maybe you can coordinate something and, and get together, and maybe approach it that way. So, of course, the other, the other solution would be to continue the, the route that we had originally. Like I said, that, that's, it's gonna be, it'll take a long time to build. And it's gonna take a lot of money, because there's a lot of houses, there's a lot of geometrics that need to go into the road building, a lot of bridges that are gonna have to be built, so, stuff like that. The next project I've got, this is a long-range project, it was brought to our attention through the county judge. Seven fifty-five, of course, we mentioned, we've worked, we worked on a piece in front of the high school. And of course, it would be, this would be from the, from the current project, seven fifty-five realignment, going north all the way to two eighty-one. And, and the, of course, the, the.
How many lanes would be?
I, I worked on an estimate, it's, like I said, it's long-term, we still haven't worked on it. What, what we would like to start off is, is trying to straighten out the curves that are right at the Brooks County line, the sharp curves, we've had some safety issues there that we'd like to address, if we could, immediately. And then, of course, you, you mentioned lanes, I, I figured out an estimate for a four-lane project, just like the one we're gonna build on the State Loop one eighty-five. And it's estimated about, you know, ten million dollars a mile also. So for the estimated cost, for the overall, including Stark County, well, for Stark County, portion of it would be about three hundred and forty million dollars. And obviously, we don't have the funding for that yet, but we can break it down like the State Loop and try to work it in sections. The Brooks County portion of it would be about two hundred and forty million. So overall, project cost to build FM, to improve seven fifty-five from a two-lane to a four-lane would be about five hundred, five hundred and eighty million dollars. So, but we're looking at it, we're gonna try to address some of the safety concerns first, and then we'll see how we can.
Two eighty-one, you said, right?
All the way to two eighty-one, the expectation being that, you know, the, the tri- and public will have, can access Redwood and City to two eighty-one. They can access the port of entry here locally.
No commercial traffic.
Commercial traffic, and, and improve commerce through the area.
Do the turns know what you're looking at?
Monday?
Dangerous curve that they're.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're trying to address first, Commissioner. We'll see if we can straighten them out first, and, and, and make work that portion of the road first, and then work, you know, work our way back. Of course, you know, four-lane road, we still gotta program it, we still gotta do all kinds of stuff, you gotta go through the environmental part of it, we have to do, to, to go through the opposition of right-of-way. And it'll take a while, but, of course, if we build a four-lane, it's gonna take some.
I understand, it's one of those turns, I had, I had a blowout once there.
Oh, right at the curve?
It was pretty nasty, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're pretty, you gotta slow down to go through them, even if you've got four perfectly good tires.
Yeah, I learned to harlowe.
So, the next project, of course, that we've got is the KCTM, I call it the KCTM, but it's the El Refugio that Rio Delta mentioned earlier. Of course, this, this project is a partnership with the city, and, you know, we've committed to acquiring the materials to, in order to advance the project. We did do the work on, on KCTM Road, where we improved the drainage through that, unfortunately, we had these obstructions downstream from the location. So we were looking at Rio Delta's recommendation of a forty-eight-inch pipe for approximately four hundred and forty feet. Right now, I, I've gotta do my due diligence and try to look for pipe that we already.
How long is that leader line that the group was talking about?
The, 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 the relief pipe, or the relief system that, that Rio Delta proposed, was about four hundred and forty feet long. Four forty.
Up to the US Corps of Engineer drainage. We, we're trying to tie into, there's an existing US Corps of Engineer Eastman already.
Yes, downstream.
We're gonna tie in that.
So about four hundred and forty feet, Commissioner, is the, and, and we're gonna go with the recommendation of forty-eight, forty-eight foot, forty-eight inch diameter pipes. But right now, like I said, I need to do my due diligence before I purchase anything. So I'm in the process of getting with the rest of the, our neighbors, I guess, locally, I doubt they'll have forty-eight-inch pipe. That's usually stuff that we don't have laying around in our yards. So I'm thinking that we're probably gonna go through the process of purchasing. What I plan to purchase is what we call a polymer-coated concrete metal pipe, corrugated metal pipe. So, from a vendor, I've already talked to him, I've gotten a price quote, so it's just a matter of, of acquiring it through our, our local budget. It's gonna cost about twenty-two to twenty-three thousand dollars to acquire the pipe. But, you know, as far as the difference, of course, concrete pipes last a lot longer. Usually, people prefer it, but in this case, there's not gonna be any loads on top of the pipe. This pipe is, is, you know, it's, the life expectancy of the pipe is seventy-five years with, with, even when we're in terror traffic on top of it, so. It should last a long time. No, it'll, I'm, I'm sure that, that polymer coated will, will, without loads on it, it'll make, it'll probably last forever. The last project I have is something that was brought up to us a, a while back, to Techstat, through a meeting we had with, with a previous mayor, Villarreal. The, the city was proposing a, a concrete median from Pete Diaz Avenue all the way to Redwood, where we're building that seven fifty-five realignment. Right now, we're currently working on, on some, Pedro was diligently working on them today. He's almost got them, he should be able to submit them tomorrow to our design, to our contracts person, so he can submit them to TTI for a study, Lisa. So hopefully, we'll submit all of that, and then TTI can get started on it, on the study. However, there was a call for, as far as safety funds for, for that purpose. This was back in twenty thirteen. The, but that call was for the eighty-three section from Pine Street, which is just east of, of Pete Diaz, all the way to Reynaldo Gomez. And that, that application was not successful in that the, the safety, let me get this straight, the Safety Improvement Index, which is kind of like a benefit-cost ratio, was kind of low, so it wasn't, it wasn't awarded to us. But I've talked to Jesse Liali, who's our Director of Traffic Operations, and, and maybe we recommended them tightening up the, the limits to what, what the city wants, and see if that'll raise our, our Improvement Index, Safety Improvement Index, up. And, and, and the, the thought about, I mean, the, the way that's pretty much figured out is, you got, the longer the stretch, the lo, the accidents are gonna get stretched out. So if you got more incidents in a shorter stretch, that'll, that'll increase the, the safety index, so. We're hoping the numbers are there per, and that, that's, that's compared to the cost of the project. So the smaller the dollar amount, and if you have more frequent incidents, then that'll push the project through. Now, of course, these projects, I mean, we've, we've had these projects in the valley in Edinburgh, and we're currently working on one on Tenth Street in McAllen. These projects are very controversial, so my recommendation is for the city to start talking to the stakeholders and the public about it. You probably won't, you're not gonna get a, a, a good feedback on it, I think, but I think that city had already talked to some of the businesses.
We had made some initial efforts because of the situation, when we started looking at Taco Bell being on that corner, and all the accidents, and near accidents between Redwood and, I think, the IBC. You know, people, there's exits and entrances, they're all coming from all sides. And I know that one of the biggest developers or, or stakeholders is HEB, and they felt that, that they could work with it. And I know that Taco Bell was also looking at, that if there was a medium, it would kind of have, one of there would be the Pine Street, it would be that turnaround lane, where you have that lift, and you turn around and.
Yeah, you know, my recommendation. Yeah, you know, my recommendation would be to have a, be able to turn into Pine Street. And of course, at both ends, that, we might have to stop it short at Redwood because of that alley that people come out of, that doesn't have a, another outlet to it, it's just in and out of the alley, right before you get to Redwood. Norris?
Well, that would help also Norris, the people who live in that subdivision to be able to get out of there.
Yeah, so the idea is to probably just stop it shorter there and leave, of course, the left turn bay at Redwood to turn into the new realignment project.
The people behind the Locer Pizpa Patron, they have always a very hard time to get out of there.
The last item I've got is, we visited with the county judge Monday, and he wanted for us to look at Alvarez Road, I know this is the city limits, all the way to Alvarez, so I asked him to give me a request in writing for a traffic signal at that location. So I'm expecting a letter from the judge, and, you know, I guess if the city is interested, they can submit a letter also for a traffic study at that location, for a signal.
And Alvarez Road and eighty-three?
Alvarez Road and eighty-three. That's all I got, if you all have any questions?
Sounds like a lot of projects are just great.
Rio Delta had a lot of projects, so. We do have some projects and, of course, we moved out of town, but not out of sight, so. We're here to assist in any way we can, we've always worked well with the city of Río Grande and their engineers. So we're there, we're a little bit further away, but you know how to get to it.
Thank you, and certainly, the millions, if they're accessible and available?
We'll continue to work with the city on materials like that, surplus materials. And I may have, if the city's interested, I'm gonna have some surplus material, some sewer pipe that was left over from a project we had in Farfurias. It's four-inch, six-inch, and fifteen-inch pipe. And unfortunately, I can't give it away, but if, you know, I can, I can accept low bids.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, in reference to the property that you all have there at downtown, across the street from Lax? Have you all had any, any...
We put it up for bids not too long ago for sale, and there were no takers. I know the city has been interested in the property, and there were some negotiations done. Right now, I think what's gonna happen is we might move in and raise the property, just flatten it out to make it more appealing to whoever wants to acquire it.
I hope you keep us in mind, you know, we are interested, we've been talking about that property and, you know, I think it's for the benefit for the city to be able to, you know, to have the city purchase that property, you know.
I'll let my district engineer know that you all are still interested, maybe get the realtor to...
How about one of those wonderful deals that come in once in a lifetime for a dollar?
Well, that might be, that might be, that might be true for the, that sewer line pipe that I was mentioning.
We'll take it, sir.
We've got, we've got...
I don't think we're gonna get one of those city hall bids, Mayor.
But we...
It's worth a try.
Unfortunately, the negotiations for the land is out of my hands, it needs to be licensed, so. But we can work something on the...
Keep us in mind, keep us in mind, we do have an eye on that property, you know, we, I know the city's interested and the commission's been talking about this, and we are interested in that property. Hopefully, you can take us into mind, that is for the best interest for the city to be able to have property in the downtown area.
I'll advise my district engineer to get with the right-of-way people up in Austin.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you for the...
Thank you. Next business in order is item eight, executive session, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, section five-five-one dot zero seven four, personal matters, and section five-five-one dot zero seven two, deliberations regarding real property. Which is items A, discussion and possible action, consultation with attorney regarding cause number DC fourteen one eighty-two, José de la Fuente del Sol Homes and del Sol Homes LLC versus Río Grande City, Texas, two-twenty-ninth, District Court of Stark County, Texas. Item B, discussion and possible action, consultation with attorney regarding cause number DC ten two seven nine, Remedio Serrera versus City of Río Grande City, three eighty-first District Court of Stark County, Texas. Item C, discussion and possible action, consultation with attorney regarding cause number DC fifteen four seven one, María Julieta Peña et al. versus Río Grande City, Texas, three eighty-first District Court of Stark County, Texas. Item D, discussion and possible action, consultation with attorney regarding cause number DC fifteen six oh four, BF five Way Services of Texas, LPDBA Allied Way Services of Río Grande Valley and City of Río Grande City, Texas, and its elected officials and their official capacities. Item E, discussion and possible action, consultation with attorney regarding DC fifteen six thirty-one, RGCC ISD versus City of Río Grande, three eighty-first District Court of Stark County, Texas. Item F, discussion and possible action regarding personal employee matters. And item G, discussion and possible action regarding prospect number twenty fifteen dash seven. It's time that the record reflects, it's eight thirty-seven PM. For the record, we're back from executive order, it's nine ten, executive session, it's nine ten PM. And for the record, there was no action taken on any of the items of A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second, any further discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Meeting adjourned. It is nine eleven PM.